Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order at 6:05 of the South of Town Grandwell Regional School Committee. If you'd like to make a public comment this evening, those two opportunities to do so as part of the agenda, please send an email to superintendent@stgrsd.org. And please be sure to include your name and address in the body of the text along with your comment. Moving on to the agenda. All right, in your packets, you should have received the secretary's report dated March 2nd, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
No moves.
Yes, second.
Anybody have any questions or changes or comments for the meeting minutes? All right, here we go, will call vote to accept those meeting minutes. Pam?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
That's a seven zero zero. Okay, warrants, Amy sent an email later this afternoon, please check your email and sign off on the warrant and return them back to the office. Correspondents?
Hi, thank you Chairman Hul. I have two pieces of correspondence tonight. One is the new DESI update on in-person learning and time on learning requirements that the commissioner has sent out. We sent it out to all families to look at, and tonight I will be doing a presentation on these new regulations on our district's plan to move forward with full in-person learning, starting on April 5th. I also have another piece of correspondence tonight, just to let the, make the school committee aware that at the end of every school year, part of our job is what they call circuit breaker, and here's a description of what circuit breaker is. I just want to let you know that they do an audit each year on what we submit, and they pull five different files this year. There were some mistakes that were made that didn't result in significant reduction in our reimbursement. It was 7,000, but lessons learned. And next year, we will be adding some additional steps to make sure that they are second and third checked before they are submitted, so we don't have these type of results in the future and discrepancies.
Okay, moving on to our first public comment, if you would check the email account.
Chairman Hul, I've checked the email account, and there are no public comments at this time.
Moving on to the student advisory report.
Hi, this is Annette St. Jacques reporting tonight. Today's SRS students participated in spring day. Students were able to wear clothes and create virtual backgrounds that represent the new season. 2021-2022 scheduling has started. If students and parents haven't been notified about this year's selection process, please reach out to the assigned counselor. Guns counselors have started reaching out to juniors about their future plans. For juniors, again, the Richard Atkinson's striving for excellence scholarship is due at the end of this month. GSA t-shirt fundraiser is still going on, order form can be found on the website. This is new, the 2021 MASC state conference has invited SRS Student Council members to attend this year's spring conference. It's a great opportunity for young leaders to come together with other students and collaborate ideas through set workshops and to learn from speakers. Unified basketball has their first game ever next week. It's against Agawam in Agawam on Wednesday, March 24th. SRS Advanced Placement Biology and Advanced Placement Chemistry classes participated in a mock exam this morning to prepare them for their college board tests. Students met with Mr. Pesletelli today to talk about the upcoming Connections Conference, which will take place on March 24th. There are many workshops that deal with different topics under social injustices that will educate both students and teachers who plan on attending. There were a lot of posters made up from the previous poster contest at SRS, and they will be hung up in the gym tomorrow. A few weeks ago, I mentioned how a selected group of students and faculty were involved in a book discussion of Don't Ask Me Where I'm From by Jennifer De Leon. The discussion went well today, and a lot of ideas came to light while discussing the importance of teaching social injustices in the school setting. The book brought up, brought the group together to try and think of ways to implement this well-written novel into a curriculum or summer assignment in the future. And that concludes tonight's student advisory report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the school board to the student rep? Thank you for your report. Moving on to educational presentations. First Superintendent Ward to discuss return to five-day in-person learning.
Thank you Chairman Hul. So I think this is what most people have been waiting for since we closed our school doors, March 13th, 2020. So I'm happy to say that we do have a plan to return all students who opted for a full five-day in-person learning model. We have it available, and I will be presenting it tonight. I want to thank all the families who completed their survey, and I need to give a huge shout out to our building principals who took data of the survey that was closed on Sunday evening at midnight, and in two and a half days, were able to create a plan for full in-person learning. So I need to give credit where credit is due, and they went above and beyond to get this plan up in, up in, up and going so that we're able to do this. So, big huge thank you. So I want to go over just a little bit of a summary of the new student learning time regulations. Since the beginning of the school year, the commissioner reduced the school day by 10 days in order to give teachers some additional professional development at the beginning of the school year. So on a yearly basis, we have student learning time that we are required to reach. It is 900 hours at the elementary level and 990 at the middle and high school level. This year, due to the shortened number of school days, he reduced it to 835 hours at the elementary level and 935 hours at the middle and high school level. So it comes out to be an average of five days and an average of five and a half hour days. Now, while we were in our hybrid, we were able to count remote time and asynchronous time towards this time on learning. In, under the new regulations, as of April 5th, it, hybrid, remote learning and asynchronous instruction will no longer count towards that 835 hours. As of April 28th, hybrid, remote and asynchronous time will no longer count towards the middle school's time on learning. Although he hasn't given us an updated phase-in approach for the high school, our school district is a 7 through 12 school, so we are including our high school in with our seventh and eighth grade phase-in approach. Again, these dates of April 5th and April 28th are final return dates. They are must-do dates. They are dates that we can, have to have our students back in school by. Our commissioner has highly encouraged us to get kids in as soon as possible. As we've said from the beginning, we know that there is nothing that can replace in-person instruction. We are still offering the full-time remote learning for our families who opted for it for the remainder of the school year. But I need to make it clear that in our budget presentation last night, we are not planning for a remote learning option provided by the district in next year's upcoming budget. How is this possible now? So I'm going to be presenting plans to you that we are able to fit all of our kids back into our school buildings, and for the most part, most classrooms will still be at six feet. But none of this would have been possible had the commissioner not updated the transportation guidelines that we sent out earlier, later in February to everybody. In the transportation guidelines, all capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements were lifted for elementary schools. And for the most part, middle and high school capacity limitations were lifted as well. They just have a little caveat for communities with high community prevalence. They did put the capacity limitations and physical distancing requirements to allow for two students per bus bench. We could easily accommodate transporting all students that want transportation to and from school with these new guidelines. A big piece of these guidelines takes into account that all students, all students and all people who are on our bus, which is the bus driver, bus monitors, students, they have to be wearing a mask. That is a non-negotiable. Another non-negotiable is keeping windows open at all times during operation. In adverse weather conditions, every other window can be opened, and districts should develop a rain plan to keep students dry when riding the bus in the rainy conditions. And also, assigned seating. Our students need to have assigned seats, and that's mostly for contact tracing. Should somebody become COVID-19 positive, we are able to look at the students who are sitting around them and to be able to contact trace accordingly. So we sent our survey out, and again, we thank all the families who took the time out to do this. And at Woodland School, we do have nine students switching from remote to in-person. We didn't anticipate a big shift at Woodland School, as they were already five-day in-person. And so the parents already had that option, so we weren't anticipating a big switch at Woodland School. We have 24 students who are opting to go from remote to in-person, and we have one student who is switching from in-person to remote. At Southwick Regional School, we saw our greatest number of students returning to full in-person, which we were predicting. Which is 72 students switching from remote to in-person, and we only had two students switching from in-person to remote. So this overall impact on our district is we now have 105 students who are coming back to in-person learning. And we do have three students switching to our remote option. The overall change is we are proud to say that Woodland School is going from 75% in-person to 77% in-person. Powdermill is going from 69% to 75% in-person, and Southwick Regional School took the biggest jump with 63% in-person to 73% in-person. So we have about three-quarters of our kids coming back to us for in-person instruction, which as, when I closed the doors on March 13th, I never anticipated they'd be closed for some students for a whole year, but we are so glad to have our students coming back to us. This is the individual school, because I know a lot of parents are looking to see how this is going to impact their child's school. We also have the building principals on here, school committee, in case you have any specific questions. But as we said, we didn't anticipate seeing a big increase at Woodland School. We're able to maintain social distance of six feet in all classrooms. We didn't need to make any changes to their lunches. We didn't have to make any changes to staffing. The only thing we need to implement is the new transportation guidelines. So Woodland School is not going to see a big shift. At Powdermill School, in 15 out of the 18 classrooms, we are still able to maintain six feet of social distancing. We do have in three classrooms, the ability to only maintain five feet of social distancing. Principal Carrier said that she's going to be able to maintain six feet of distance at lunch with just minimal changes to the lunch schedule. One thing that, if you read the student learning time regulations, the commissioner did anticipate that there might be some staffing and programmatic changes with this new in-person model. Powdermill did have some shifts to their staffing. We do have one grade six teacher who is going from full remote to an in-person teacher due to the number of students returning. We have a grade five remote teacher who will now be teaching one block of grade six remote math and two blocks of remote specials. And we have one grade six remote teacher from two grade two, from grade six remote ELA blocks to one grade six remote ELA and two blocks of remote specials. Now, the school committee approved, I think it was in January, of hiring a remote specialist teacher. I know Mrs. Carrier has been trying to hire somebody. We have had no luck. So with this shift, she was able to accommodate those remote specials. So the remote students will now be getting remote specials from two of our staff who we currently have in our school building. Classroom location changes due to the size of some classrooms. Two grade four classes and two grade six classes will exchange rooms due to the student enrollment. And one of the classrooms, A124, will become the new sixth grade in-person classroom. And again, we do have to change to the new transportation guidelines to accommodate all of our students who will be returning. Now, Southwick Regional School, this was a lot of work in a short amount of time due to the nature of teaming fast schedules and not having one consistent teacher. So Principal Tremel got me the data as fast as he could get it, and we're happy to say that 97% of our classrooms at the high school level will remain at six feet. 72% at the seven-eight school level will be at six feet. 23 out of the 24 classrooms that will not be at six feet are going to be at four to five feet. And one classroom will be at potentially three feet if they do not change a room. It is a outlier of a classroom. It does have a lot of students in it. And we did meet with all the teachers who were not at six feet and offered them additional spaces if they wanted to switch their classroom. A lunch, minimal changes at the high school. Cafeteria may be used for the seven-eight level to accommodate a larger class sizes, because again, kids must be six feet apart when unmasked and when eating. And as soon as it gets nice out, weather permitting, that we will be using the courtyards and outdoor spaces with our picnic tables for lunch. No staffing changes at Southwick Regional School, and right now, classroom location changes. There is the potential changes to three grade seven classrooms that Mr. Tremel is meeting with middle school team tomorrow morning. We're still in the middle of impact bargaining, and so he is going to be meeting with them. And again, we do have to change the transportation guidelines in order to accommodate all of our students back at school. So current steps and anticipated guidelines. What are we doing with all this information? So we are happy to say that we have been working with our teachers' union Monday, and we met again today with respect to the new student learning time regulations. These regulations are legally binding, which means a lot of the decisions are out of my hands, and they are out of the union's hands. They are legally binding. They are requirements that we must follow as a school district. For example, the 835 hours, non-negotiable. Those hours have to be met. Which is why it is impacting our Wednesday afternoons. As of right now, we are anticipating turning our Wednesdays into full instructional days. And we haven't finalized it yet, but I can let you know that the majority, if not all, of the Wednesdays will be going towards full instructional days for both remote students and for in-person learning. In our anticipated reopening timeline, for April 5th for pre-K through six, and April 26th, which is the Monday that we return for vacation, for grades seven through 12. It is two days earlier than the final return date set forth by the commissioner, but we feel it's the most natural day to return back to in-person learning the day after the school vacation. So that is where we are, and I, I'm available for questions as are our building administrators.
Does the committee have any questions about this return to in-person plan?
So this is Pam. I do have a couple of questions. My first question is, you know, for, since September, the students have been learning through Zoom, whether they are in-person or remote. And that actually model that, that model has worked really well, given the current circumstances. But when the students are now returning to five days a week, will they continue to be learning through Zoom? I would assume not, but my follow-up question would be, what is the plan for students who will need to quarantine for a 14-year period, 14-day period due to COVID reasons?
Joe, do you want to take that, or do you want me to take that?
Well, I can, I can speak to it at the seven through 12 building. You know, because we're going five-day full in-person, however, we still have a percentage of students in each class that will be remote. So the teachers are going to, to shift from spending most of their time in, in front of the computer, teaching to all students, to now hopefully more of that dynamic learning model, where they are up in front of the students that are in-person, but that students at home through the remote model will still be able to log in and, and learn through the, the remote model. So the learning model is not going to change drastically at, at SRS. Students in-person and remote will still get the same, same material and, and instruction from, from the teachers.
So Joe, are students in the in-person learning and the remote sections, are they in the same class sections with the same teachers? Or do you have it set that those students that are learning remotely are in separate class sections with separate, separate teachers?
Same sections.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to get Jenny Sullivan just way in here as well. Development that was provided for the model that took place at the regional school where teachers had both, they were doing synchronous instruction to both in-person and remote students at the same time.
Sure, so we had Mike Flynn, who had been working with us on a math initiative, who had a lot of experience with the dynamic hybrid model, because that's how they teach courses in their math program at Mount Holyoke. And he was able to provide some professional development with, to the teachers on how to teach to the students in the class and have the remote students zoom in, which was opposite of what we kind of started out with, where everyone was sort of tethered to their computer, including the teacher. We've also invested quite a bit of money in the technology to make that possible through the purchase of microphones, speakers, and things like that. And Mike did some professional development with the teachers on how to set that up so that it functions well and it feels more like, like authentic classroom learning. Unfortunately, we had a lot of that PD right before we had that, that long closure. So it's not, everybody's up and running with that, but I would hope that we could have that setup going for all the classrooms in the district so that students that do need to be remote for a week or two at a time due to quarantining purposes can still participate and not lose any more learning.
Thank you. I have a second question, and this is directed to Ms. Carrier. If, could you speak to us a little bit more about the situation with the remote specialist classes and how you, you are addressing that issue?
Certainly. So we were given permission by the school committee to hire someone in late January, and that was posted. We unfortunately did not have strong candidates. We were actively looking, actually calling other districts to see if they had teachers who were unable to return, who would want to work from home for health reasons, example, for example. And we really exhausted a search and weren't able to find anyone. I had one candidate who I was going to interview, and they dropped out. I thought I was going to have it, and then no, no cigar. So, so we've been operating in the model we had, which was asynchronous specials. Our current specialist teachers were providing asynchronous lessons for the students. We continued that up until now, and when we are looking at the model, you know, we don't run it like the high school. That's a little bit different for us. So when students are hybrid, days that they're in, there's an in-person teacher. The days that they're home, there is a teacher who is, who's online with them. And so because all of those hybrid students were coming back and they would be with their in-person teacher, we no longer had as many kids at home needing the remote instruction. So that changed the timing, and we are able now to do a little movement and look at our teachers' strengths in the classroom and say, two teachers who were, one in sixth grade, one was teaching fifth grade. One is a strong math teacher. She'll be doing our sixth grade math. One was already doing our ELA and is a strong ELA teacher. She'll continue to do that, and that frees up half of their day then to offer the special. So it's really kind of worked out perfectly for us with the, the movement and the changes.
And which specials classes will those teachers be teaching, and does it fall within their area of certification?
So our teachers are generalists, so at this level, they are able to teach all of the subjects. What we're going to be doing is, one of our specials all year has been science, and students have taken their five weeks through the science curriculum to supplement the science that we do in our inter-reading program. We are going to have these teachers do science three days a week, most likely Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They will do science for the rest of this year to give these students that interactive piece that they haven't been able to have a person in front of them for. And then the other two days, Tuesday and Thursday, they're going to work with our current specialist teachers to, to develop some lessons that they can then do with the students, and they're going to be very creative with it. So it might be, okay, today is a Tuesday, and we're going to be doing a music lesson that Mr. Barrett gave us. And, but they're going to be working with the students. It's not going to be just, you know, the asynchronous. They're going to be live with the student through music. They'll do the PE. They'll be doing some coding with, from our digital literacy teacher. So they're going to kind of mix in a little bit for the last 10 weeks for these students.
So this includes all of the specials classes then?
Yes, we're going to try to touch on all of the specials for them, and it'll be each of those two teachers. One will have a third grade and a fifth grade. One will have a fourth grade and a sixth grade block, blocks.
And then my final question related to that is, this is the first year that science has been considered elective at Powdermill, I believe.
Yeah.
Will that continue in a non-pandemic scenario, or would you, would, would things revert back to that, that being considered a more core class in the future?
Right. So it is considered in a way a special, but it's still not considered a special, if that makes sense. So the reading program that we've brought in into reading, that integrates science and social studies into the block through nonfiction texts. So the texts that they use are with the, are with the curriculum standards for science and social studies at each grade level and align to it. We felt like that, that was this year, given the pandemic issues and the changes in time on learning and just the, the added stress for students of having missed so much last year, that we felt like we wanted to devote more time to the math and science and use just their inter-reading. That's why we offered the special science block as kind of more just an interactive piece, because we do know that so much of science isn't just reading about a nonfiction text. It's seeing the experiments, it's doing the fun things that, that go along with it. So we tried to bridge that gap this year. It is not our intent to do that every year. So we're very happy that the inter-reading brings in the social studies and science standards for us, but we do anticipate moving, you know, the, the time back. Also, when we no longer have max breaks, we're going to gain a lot of instructional time. So, you know, we will look at a more pre-COVID normalcy.
Thank you. I think that's it for my questions. Someone else wants to jump in?
Any other committee questions?
Yeah, this is Ryan. You talked about how we won't have remote next year, which is wonderful. But what if, are there restrictions for like quarantining and whatnot? Are we anticipating them to be lifted? Or what happens if a kid in the fall gets COVID?
Great question. We're going to be waiting for guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education with their expectations around quarantining. And it might be as simple as the students being at home and using the model that Jenny Sullivan just explained, where they get to participate in the classroom remotely via instruction. I don't have any definitives right now on that for next year.
Any other questions from the school board?
This is Chelsea. I'm look, I'm thinking, can we go back to the slide for SRS? And, um, yeah, that one. Okay, so there's one. I just know in my personal experience that three feet definitely was something that kind of brought out my exclamation, exclamation points. I'm wondering, is there any way or, I'm just still tentative on that kind of distancing and the four to five feet. Well, five feet is pretty good, but, um, is it, is there any way for us to provide another classroom, more space, more teachers to help that or did we already, is that really our limit?
Principals from Al.
Well, uh, we looked at a, a number of different options. We do have classrooms that can facilitate the, the greater number of students in classrooms. A general-sized classroom at the regional school can hold fourteen students at, at six feet in the science labs can hold, uh, twenty-four students at six feet. So we've, we've looked into moving some of the, the non-science classes into the science labs, um, to, to maintain that six-foot distance. Uh, what that does is present a, another problem where none of our science classes would be in lab spaces for the remainder of the year. We've looked at alternative spaces in the library as well, to create some classrooms there. We presented these to one of the middle school teams, uh, but they felt comfortable right now in the space that they have in their own classroom, with the four to five-foot distance. And it's actually a teacher that has a three-foot class as well, um, maintaining in the classroom. Uh, the teachers feel very comfortable with the setup that they have with their technology at their desks, how they're, they're conducting their classroom and making it work, uh, a disruption to, to the delivery and, um, just the makeup of the classroom right now. They, they'd rather not change their setting. But I have another meeting tomorrow with the second middle school team. We'll make those options available to them as well, um, as we did with the high school teachers. That if they want more space for their classes, then it is available to them and we would make those adjustments.
I just, um, one of my biggest concerns this whole pandemic is that sometimes these discussions come down to whether or not people are comfortable and it's a personal decision and we keep receiving guidance that from the CDC that still six feet, still maintain six feet. Desi says we can go down to three feet, but we know they're just trying to get our kids in. But that you should try to keep it larger than three feet. And so I just hate that discussion where it's, um, this person feels comfortable. Well, what about the fourteen students who are sitting in the clock, in the classroom who didn't really have that choice? So I don't, I'm just on, I'm uncomfortable, I guess, with that.
And quite frankly, Chelsea, I'm just jealous.
I know. That's me though.
Joe, while we're on this slide, um, my, uh, I'm looking at lunch, um, you know, and you acknowledge the cafeteria may be used for the seventh and eighth grade level. Understandably so because at that point in time, you know, with the kids with their masks off, they do need to be six feet apart. Are you envisioning that, um, some classrooms when, um, possible for seventh and eighth grade would remain in the classroom for lunch and others would go to the cafeteria? Or are you envisioning like everybody in seventh and eighth grade going to the cafeteria?
I, I don't believe that we can, that the cafeteria can hold all middle school students at six feet apart. So we are, are looking at some type of rotation where some of the classrooms go into the cafeteria and some classrooms will eat lunch, um, in the classroom. We do have the luxury of outdoor spaces and, and picnic tables that we will be able to put outside as well that we would utilize when we get back April twenty-sixth. The weather hopefully will be, uh, will be more favorable for students, uh, having classrooms outside and eating outside. So that's an option for us as well, but not all seventh and eighth graders will be eating in the cafeteria at once.
Thank you.
Any other committee questions? Okay. Thank you, Jen and Principals for your efforts to pull this together. It's gonna be great to get folks back in the classroom. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Group Insurance Advisory Committee report. Director of Finance, Mr. Presnell.
Mr. Presnell, you're muted.
Sorry, I don't know how I did that. Did you hear any of that? No.
Oh.
Okay, sorry. Let me try again. So I want to take a few minutes this evening to talk about the renewal of our group health, dental, health and dental insurance plans with the Maya Health Benefits Trust, which is the purchasing group that we're, uh, part of, uh, probably for about the last four or five years now, after leaving Berkshire Health Group. Uh, the effective date for the renewal of our, uh, group insurance benefit program is, uh, July first. We usually have an open enrollment period during the month of May. You may recall from the, um, public hearing on our FY twenty-two budget, uh, last night that we're, uh, anticipating significant, uh, savings in the, in the employee benefit category, uh, pension assessment going way down and the, uh, group health insurance seeing a very modest, uh, decrease in the rate. And, um, actually a premium holiday, which basically means they're not gonna charge us for a month's worth of, group health insurance for active, active employees. And that shared equally with the, with the employees themselves. So both the district and the employees receive the benefit of that, that premium holiday. So we're excited about that. Leads to significant savings for the district, but, but also for the employees. One of the things we've been pushing the Health Benefits Trust on for the last couple of years has been to, uh, offer us some, a, a lower cost option that employees could take advantage of. Being a, being an employer, a school district that contributes fifty percent, uh, of the cost of these plans, the employee is stuck with the other fifty percent for people who are on the, um, particularly on the lower end of our, our wage or salary, uh, scales. And that can be a challenge, particularly if they have, uh, family plans that they, uh, family members that they're responsible for, for covering through health insurance. Just an aside, um, one of the, uh, accounts payable warrant items that, that you were asking you folks to sign off on for this week is a twenty-nine thousand dollar payment to the Internal Revenue Service, which is, uh, essentially, uh, an Affordable Care Act penalty, which results from, uh, a number of our employees. It's probably about ten employees who, over the course of the two thousand and eighteen plan year, had to buy, wound up purchasing insurance on one of the exchanges and received a subsidy. What happens under the Affordable Care Act is those, those, uh, subsidy costs are, uh, or at least some portion of them are passed on, back on to the, to the original employer. The insinuation being that our, our plans were not affordable enough for the employees. So, so we do recognize that there, these plans are expensive. It takes a big chunk out of, out of employees' paycheck. So thus the effort to try to introduce a, a plan option that would, uh, have lower premiums and, and maybe be a little more affordable for, for people. This year, uh, and in past years where we've asked for that, the, the, um, the options just were not good. The savings were not significant. Uh, we chose really not to bring those forward after discussing with the, uh, finance subcommittee. But this year we are bringing an option forward that, uh, we thought was, was worth, um, worth pursuing. Basically adding a high deductible plan with a, uh, health savings account option. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in, in a second. When we do entertain changes to the health insurance, uh, offerings, uh, one of the things that we do is, uh, engage the Insurance Advisory Committee. So we've, we've done that. Uh, we actually had two separate meetings over the last two days. Michelle Griesay, who, uh, works in the superintendent's office and serves as our group benefits administrator and myself met with, um, representatives from the various bargaining units. I know that the, uh, teachers, uh, union is having a meeting on Monday and the, the, um, Insurance Advisory, Advisory Committee members were gonna, uh, mention these changes to them at that, at those meetings as well and bring back any, any feedback to us. The timing with all of this is that the, uh, renewal, the, uh, deadline for the renewal of the, uh, insurance through Maya Health Benefits Trust is April first. And so we'd like to get an action item on the, uh, March thirtieth, uh, school committee agenda to accept the rates. What, what Maya has, uh, done here is, is provided four different scenarios. And really the last page of this, uh, is, is the one that I'd like to focus on this evening. And, um, what that does is shows you what we would be looking at for the, uh, the, uh, plan options. The HMO, and I'm just gonna make my screen a little larger here so I can see this. Thank you, Amy. The HML Blue, uh, New England Value Plus, uh, Plan, uh, that's our most widely subscribed to plan. The, uh, Blue Care Elect Benchmark Plan is a, uh, PPO, uh, type plan. The Access Blue Saver is the high deductible plan that they're, uh, proposing. And the Maya HMO Blue Benchmark Plan, benchmark meaning it's tied to the Group Insurance Commission's, uh, standard plan, which has a, uh, a small deductible, low deductible of two hundred and fifty per individual or seven fifty per family. By adding the, uh, well, let me back up for a second. The, um, we're permitted to have four plans in our, in our array of, uh, health insurance benefits. The, uh, there's the plan that we currently offer that has only one subscriber. So it's clearly not, not an attractive, it's actually our most expensive, um, offering right now. It's clearly not an attractive option for, uh, the majority of our employees. And our, our, uh, our recommendation would be that we drop that plan. It is a, uh, it's the, uh, Maya BCEP, but not the benchmark version. It would be the value plus version. So that's not shown here. We would be eliminating that plan and replacing it with the Access Blue Saver option. Um, and you can see from the rate comparison that it's, uh, significantly less expensive than, than the, um, the other plans. Uh, it does have significant deductibles, two thousand dollars per individual. And so folks need to, you know, it's not gonna work for everybody. But folks also need to, to exercise some discipline and contribute to the health savings account that is, uh, coupled with that, uh, where you can, uh, build up value in and use that to pay for, uh, out-of-pocket medical costs that you may incur, uh, while you're meeting the deductible. I could get way deep into the weeds on what the plan, uh, the plan design is like, but the essential, uh, thing, central takeaways are that it, it does offer a, a much lower premium. Uh, it is, uh, a high deductible plan and there is an HSA, uh, that goes with it that allows employees to save on a tax-deferred basis. And that money stays with them. It's not a use it or lose it type proposition. So that's
Sure. Can I just say that it's a two thousand per individual, but I do believe it's a four thousand max per family?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. So if you, even if you cover six people, it would still be a four thousand max per family? I just want to make that clear.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. That's an important, important feature. So it's not like you're gonna get stuck for ten thousand if you've got five people in, in your family. So another, and, and so, you know, at this point, this is, this is our recommendation, um, to, to move forward with this array of plans. Another feature though that we're, um, that we wanna make you aware of is the, uh, opportunity to add a vision plan, this Blue Twenty-Twenty Plan, which is a voluntary, um, vision plan. Uh, we do get inquiries from our employees and our retired employees who are eligible for our health insurance program whether we have a, a vision plan. And so while there is vision coverage in, in each of these plans to pay for an exam every year, the coverage essentially ends there and there is no coverage for, um, copayments on, on lenses or, uh, any allowances on, uh, eyeglass frames or the, uh, or contact lenses. This plan would, would do that. Uh, right now we're making the recommendation that this plan be added as an entirely voluntary program and there would be no district contribution to it. Although that is one of the requests that, uh, the Insurance Advisory folks have asked, you know, whether the district would consider, um, paying for the fifty percent share of, of this coverage as well. My understanding is that's something that would probably be through negotiations, um, and not to be added on, on the fly, such as we're doing now. What, by adding the vision plan, uh, Maya Health Benefits Trust would provide another half, uh, half a percent, uh, point five three, uh, of a percent, reduction to our health insurance rates, um, effective July first. So we'd wind up with a little over a full percentage, uh, rate reduction. Again, the reduction shared evenly between the district and the employees. Admittedly, it's, it doesn't amount to a significant, uh, uh, sum of money. Probably, you know, my rough estimation, probably about twenty-eight hundred dollars in total, annualized in savings for the district and twenty-eight hundred dollars being, uh, saved by employees, um, in, in total. So not a huge economic benefit there, but nonetheless, a, uh, an opportunity for employees and the district to share, uh, to save a little bit of money by adding this additional option. The reason that, um, Maya Health Benefits Trust is, is incentivizing, uh, employers to add this is that, uh, regular vision care, regular vision exams, uh, has been determined to be a, a, an identifier of other, uh, disease, more ser, uh, serious disease of other, other, um, bodily functions, other areas of the body. And, um, so kind of promoting and pushing folks to, to get in there and, and, um, take advantage of their, their, uh, the exam that, through their regular coverage. Or in this case, we could have employees who don't have our health insurance plan but would be interested in, in, um, in jumping onto the, the vision plan. And it's all geared toward, uh, early detection of, uh, some other formidable, uh, diseases. So that's what, that is what we're proposing, that the, um, the district add the voluntary vision plan and, uh, opt to add the high deductible plan. Now admittedly, we don't have all the feedback yet from the Insurance Advisory Committee, where the folks we did speak with over the last couple of days seemed encouraged by it and supportive of the, of the concept. But we do wanna wait till they've had an opportunity to address it with all of their membership and then get back to us and we'd come back to you with, with feedback on that. But with the hope that we'd be in a position to, uh, to make a decision on, um, on the at the next school committee meeting later later this month.
You want to have any questions for Mr. Prozno?
I just just want to mention, we we have been discussing this for a couple of months now with the finance subcommittee. So at least a few folks are of your group are aware of our intentions around this this issue.
Last call for questions on the insurance changes. Okay, going back to the agenda. We have no policy readings this evening. Moving on to action items.
Move to approve the 2021-2022 district calendar revision 1.6 recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions on the change? Just fixing the vacation issue. Okay, hearing one, we do a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passes 700.
Move to approve the Southwick Regional School Program of Studies for the 2122 school year recommended.
So moved.
I second.
These are the changes that Prinzen will tomorrow went through last time. Any final questions or concerns on this? It will be a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Depp is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to approve the sale of surplus equipment as described below by means of sealed bids. In the event no bid is received by the posted due date TBD for one or more of the listed vehicles, the chief procurement officer for Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District shall be authorized to seek salvage value for said vehicles. 2008 Dodge Grand Caravan SE VIN number 1D8HN44H88B148832. 2009 Chrysler Town and Country VIN 2A8HR44E29R659733. 2009 GMC Thomas School Minibus VIN 1GBJG31K091165723. 2010 Thomas Freightliner School Bus VIN 4UZABRDK4ACAN5208. 2011 GMC Thomas School Minibus VIN 1GD373BG4B1145443, recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, any question, questions on the sale of these surplus vehicles?
So I'm just going to assume that these are vehicles that were part of our transportation department that we offered to LPVEC, but that they did not want them. Is that a correct assumption?
You are correct, Mrs. Petchke.
All right.
And will these be posted as a bundle bid or separately?
It'll be posted both ways, Chelsea. Folks can bid on the whole block of them, or they can bid on them individually. The rule of award is going to be for the highest price per 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 vehicle. You know, I'm 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 imagining we may get a couple of bids on some of these and the others may have to go via salvage value. And we have reached out and, you know, we know who we who we can go to for salvage value on these and what what we should expect for an offer.
All right.
Any last questions?
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say, we're gonna post post the sale, the the bid in each of the three communities town halls and and advertise it on the district website as well as probably post something in the in the local newspaper, Westfield News.
All right, thank you for the clarification. All right, hearing no more questions, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Motion passes 700.
Move to award a contract in the amount of $8,000 to the Siegel Group Incorporated for actuarial valuation services related to Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District's other post employment benefits, OPEB liability. Services to include valuation of OPEB liability as of June 30th, 2020, and Gatsby 7475 Accounting Report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, as described in the statement of work dated January 1st, 2021. Services will be completed and billed after June 30th, 2021, recommended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any committee questions about the contract with Siegel Group?
Have we used this group before for the same service?
They are the only company that has done actuarial work for us originally through the Berkshire Health Group, or Berkshire Purchasing Group, I'm sorry. And then most recently, an independent contract with the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Right, hearing one, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Depp is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to approve the agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee and Jessica Cody Accounts Payable Specialist for the period February 5th, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, recommended.
Sorry, having a hard time with the mute button button. So moved.
I second.
Any questions on this employment contract? Okay, it will be a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Depp is a yes. Motion passes 700.
Move to approve the agreement between the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School Committee and Lisa Buscat, Payroll Specialist for the period February 5th, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions on this employment contract? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Depp is a yes, 700.
Move to approve the 2021 school year pause PTO fundraiser square one art recommended.
So moved.
I second.
Any questions on this fundraiser? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Depp is a yes. Motion passes 700. Okay, moving on to reports, superintendent is up first.
I don't have any reports tonight. We just worked on, we had our public budget hearing last night and we did our district in-person learning presentation tonight. That's been keeping us pretty busy. So that's what I have tonight for the committee.
Okay, Director of Finance and Operations, Mr. Prozno?
No report, no report this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to subcommittees and liaisons. Finance Committee met last Thursday. We discussed the insurance information that was proposed tonight as well as budget changes that were presented on Tuesday evening. Jonathan and Ted, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope.
LPVEC, I know we have a meeting next, I think it's next Wednesday. I'm not sure, Pam, if you guys are meeting that night as well?
Yes, I believe I do, and I do not have anything to add at this point in time.
Okay. Policy subcommittee, I hear you guys are pretty busy behind the scenes. Any update on policies?
Leave our meeting next week and we'll have a good chunk of them for our next meeting to review for first reading.
Buildings and grounds, I believe, Steve, we've got sets set, yeah, untied. I think we have something set up for the first Monday of April, if I'm not mistaken. Is that true?
I think so, checking my calendar. I I don't have it on there, but I can I can verify with Mr. Whiteender tomorrow.
Okay. Athletics, Jonathan, what do you have for us?
Oh, I just chimed in with March 22nd, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thanks.
I I've got an update from from Dave that I can go through. Some of the just general stuff about the fall season too. There's girls volleyball varsity and JV, girls basketball varsity and JV, and boys basketball varsity and JV. Each are going to have 12 games on their schedules. There's been bubbles created for those teams. There's there's some different schools involved with that. I don't I don't know that it's necessary to read all that off, but there's also indoor track training only March for March then for duel and try meets outdoors within the bubble beginning 4-1. There's an inaugural season, as mentioned in the student advisory report for the unified basketball. There's 12 players, six athletes, six partners, four games, two are home, two are away. There's also some team training only going on with ice hockey and Alpine skiing. So a total of seven sports, 12 teams and 130 plus student athletes participating in fall two. So that's just a general of what's going on there. The the larger item that has come up is regarding spectators and some changes that are coming the way of of that. Dave reached out to the Board of Health with a proposal for allowing spectators at home events. The proposal was sent to the school committee last week for reviews. You should have seen that the proposal was deemed to be more than sufficient by the Board of Health. They plan to allow home spectators, parents plus siblings only in accordance with the protocols put forth in that proposal beginning on Monday, March 22nd. So I'll stop there for a second. Does anybody have any feedback about that or any issues?
So the Board of Health deeming it more sufficient, it does that mean the Board of Health approves it or simply says it's better than?
Jen, you could back you could back this up if you want, but they they generally don't approve or disapprove. They just give guidance as to whether they think things are okay or not. They leave it up to us to make the decisions.
I have spoken to her about it and she said that she feels very comfortable with it. She has no questions or concerns. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that on that? Or is that that it?
So John, when you talk about, you know, the the fall sports two teams being within a bubble, does that just mean that, you know, we've identified the teams that they will be competing against and those are the only teams that they will be competing against?
Correct.
Okay.
Which I can I can read them off if you want to hear them. So the basketball is Southwick Gateway, Munson, Munson, Belchertown, Northampton, Savis, Granby and Hampshire. Volleyball is Southwick, Savis, South Hadley. Winter indoor track is the is the only the training and the for duel and try meets. And then track, let's see, their track bubble is beginning 4-1 outdoors is Southwick, Pope Francis, Hampton Charter, Mohawk in Hampshire.
Just out of curiosity, are these, you know, communities that we typically play in a normal school year? Or are these bubbles just created based on, you know, who actually has sports teams right now and, you know, vicinity and things like that?
Jen might be able to better answer that question than I can. Oh, is Dave there?
Yeah, so
we're having trouble hearing you, Dave. Or at least I am.
Hello?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay, so some of these schools might be in our league and we might schedule against them. All of them are in our PVIAC conference. But the bubbles were created based on which schools were competing during this season. And then you factoring in geographic consideration as well in some cases, just to keep schools kind of closer together as much as possible. Basketball being the exception of the exception there, basketball, that's all of the schools participating in fall two. So we were all put in together, but they split it off into two two groups. So we're only playing a couple of the schools once.
Thank you. And I know that like everything else this year, this has been a challenge. So thank you for your efforts and you know, figuring this out and making it all happen for the kids.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other questions, the last item I've got here is just on spring sports that Dave put in here. So the MIA has approved outdoor track and field, unified track cheerleading, boys volleyball, baseball and softball for spring competition according to the sport specific modifications. Wrestling is still pending EEA approval. And that's all I've got. Thank you, Dave.
John, thanks for sharing. IOT was met again since our last meeting?
No, I do not believe we have since our last meeting.
The other liaison that would like to report out this evening?
The wellness committee met today, oh, sorry.
You go.
Wellness met today. We talked a lot about just like food. And actually, it's interesting that a lot more kids are buying lunch since we've been back and breakfast, actually. And that they're still providing food for those who are remote and it's still going very well. All their staff are back, so they seem very happy. And evidently, our kids are being very well fed.
Thank you. Chelsea, did you have something?
I was just gonna say that on the fourth, the capital committee finished up, the Southwick Capital Committee finished up their work with recommendations for the finance committee.
All right, moving on to our second public comment. Me, if you would check the mail.
Okay, Chairman Hool, I have one public comment from Laura White, Southwick, Mass. She says, in powder mills specifically, if a child needs to quarantine due to positive test or as a close contact, will they join the remote class? What about if a family travels and needs to quarantine? How will the person, how will the in-person students receive schooling? Is there still a limit of positive cases in the schools and county applicable? Is there still a limit of positive cases in the schools and county applicable app- applicable? Sorry, for the schools going full remote. And that's the end um her her comment, and that concludes public comments.
Thank you, Amy. Right, moving on to committee discussion. Anybody have any old business? I just want to mention, um, Steve stole my thunder. We are scheduling a school board meeting uh at the end of March. On the thirtieth, so that we can approve the uh next fiscal year budget to get it to the towns uh in time to get the warrant articles written. For the three town meetings. Um, in lieu of that, we're only gonna hold one uh meeting in April, uh which. Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, we're targeting the thirteenth of April, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So three meetings in March, but we're only gonna have one meeting in April to try to balance it out and um April vacation's also in there, so. Anybody have any conflicts with those two evenings?
So it was March thirtieth and what was the April date?
April thirteenth.
All right, I'm checking now. I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else have any other conflicts with that?
Week of the twentieth is April vacation, right?
Correct.
But I'm going anywhere.
Uh, the other item that I was looking for some help on this evening, uh this is a new business. Um, of the Southwick members, uh the town of Southwick is holding a. Uh, meeting with all the departments to review the Southwick budget. Uh, it's this Saturday. Um, we have a time slot in the morning. Uh, unfortunately, I did not get the information until uh midweek. Um, it was yesterday, actually, and I am not available to attend, so I'm looking for. A Southwick member to participate on the Zoom call uh with the superintendent and business manager. Uh, to review uh the budget with uh the Board of Selectmen and the Southwick FinCom. Uh, for any last questions that they may have. Any takers?
Say I really can't because I'm working the night before, so I will be sleeping in the morning.
What was the date on that?
This Saturday, um, Amy, is it ten forty-five in the morning? Is that our slot? Trying to pull up the email quickly.
Chairman Hool, I have ten fifty-five in my calendar.
Ten fifty-five, we normally go as long as an hour with them. Usually Jen and Steve be most of the talking.
That's good, I can do that.
I I think it could, you know, unless they're backed up, but I think it could go less simply just based it. Normally, this meeting is in relation to our public budget hearing. It hasn't, it follows a different uh schedule. So the fact that we just had the public hearing um last night and the fact that there are no just. At this stage, there are no discretionary assessments, there's. Um, they may have some questions, but I I can imagine there's a lot.
Okay, I can, I mean, I can, I can do it, just if she's obviously sending the info along to me.
Thank you, John. I'll make sure Amy uh sends you an email invite.
Okay.
That's all I had. Does anybody else have any other new business for this evening?
So I just wanted to um kind of add one thing, you know, in listening to that last public comment, obviously. Um, the the question um about, you know, what students who need to quarantine um will do moving forward. Was the same question that I had, so obviously parents at all um grade levels um have that question. And while we have the principals here, I would just like to request um that um that information be communicated clearly. Um, to, you know, your students and and your parents, because I know that each school operates a little bit differently. Um, each each team or cohort might operate a little bit differently. Um, I know that you guys have a plan in place, um, and you're phenomenal about communication. So, you know, just as a parent, that is an important piece of um information that I do foresee needing to be communicated.
And Pam, our practice is not changing. If a student goes into a uh quarantine, we have to provide them an education this year.
Of course, and you know, just obviously a concern of parents, you know, if if the way that that happens. Um, changes or just, you know, for students, students changing models, knowing how, you know, how to access the class remotely when necessary.
Okay, we're at the point where I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second that motion.
Do a roll call vote, Pam.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And Jeff is a yes. Thank you very much for participating tonight and good evening.